We apologize for being a few minutes late. I think it's been worthwhile. Uh, we'd like to call and make an order. I need a motion to adopt the change. Do I have that motion? So move. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Mr. Carrick. Work session hours. The silence.
Evening. Uh, we thank all of you for being here tonight. And uh, I thank Mr. Robinson and his staff for getting everything together for us. It looks fantastic alone during, so we really appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, I want to ask Miss Bennett to come and give you an update on some of the change orders that we've been working with Harper on the last couple of uh, weeks. And the projects are going well. Uh, we're really pleased with the progress and thinks that uh, everything looks great. You'll hear from our architects here in just a little bit. And so we thank you for being here tonight. Aubrey and Josh are with us. And uh, and so Kim, if you'll come on up and tell us what you've got for some change orders.
Evening members of the board. My name is Dr. Cox. Uh, we do, we have some change orders that we've been working with Harper and McMillan has sent on. Uh, the one that we did have that we're ready to submit is a change order that involves Burnsville. There's some foundation drains, some storm structure, also uh, Blue Ridge. There's some change in the sprinkler zone. We have some exposed single wildup to double wildup. Um, Kane River, there's relocating an existing gas line. We have installing a backflip preventer at the chiller. All these would be using the allowances at these locations that would not have any additional days to the scope of work. Uh, also, there are some things that we are still talking through and um, working with Harper and our architects on. There's some mechanical valve isolations, cable created, foundation drains, mechanical bypass, GM and dining sprinkler, and parking lot French drain at Burnsville. There's mechanical isolation valves relocating the gas line, main bathroom door replacement, chiller backflip preventer, epoxy losses at Kane River. And at Blue Ridge, there's some sidewalk demolitions and casings, um, some pre K sinks, which is on the agenda for your approval. And sprinkler changes, the duct work, which are also on, uh, one that we're getting ready to submit. And the faucet sensors that we are changing from manual to automatic. Do you have any questions about any of these changes and things that may be coming in the future?
Seeing none and hearing none. Do we have a motion?
I don't need you. This was an approval. There's another one though that will be the next one. Thank you. You want me to do that one too? Okay, sorry. So then, um, the one that you have in your packet is for the pre K sinks. Those were not initially in the drawings and they were an added requirement for pre K for the inspections. Um, to pass that, we needed those sinks. So that is in your packet for your approval. Do you have any questions about that?
Do we have a motion to approve change order number 011, Woodridge Elementary School?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Those who care, thank you.
Thank you.
In your packet, you have the roof estimates that we've been given for Kane River at East Jancy. And Steve or Kim, do you want to add anything else to those?
Unless the board has any questions.
Is it the same amount for both? I noticed, I went through it and it had just...
It's $10 difference.
$10 difference.
Yeah. There's $10 difference. WNC Roofing was $10 less than Johnson Roofing. Um, we have had WNC Roofing do some work here at East Jancy and have been pleased with them. Um, so it was a $10 difference.
Okay. And the schools, the amounts, the same for the schools?
They were.
They were, okay. Cause I saw on Kane River.
It is the same section.
Okay. It's the same section, section 8 and 9, right?
Yes. It's the same sections. It's the section, the media center section.
Yes.
And that, it's the same section for both schools. So it is the same price. It's just that WNC was $10 cheaper.
Um, I did have a question on this. Um, it looks like they're $10 cheaper, but I see a, in Johnson, I see a 20-year manufacturer uh, warranty. And then I see it as an extra $3,600 to upgrade to a manufacturer warranty um, on WNC Roofing.
There is, yeah, but I think there is a, on the um, page four, the system includes a 20-year material warranty and a two-year workmanship warranty on the WNC.
Okay. So that's, so that's a different material.
Yeah. That was, that part was included. These are just, if you want, these additional warranties.
And then has Johnson, am I correct to say they've been up here working on these as well? Um, I think when maybe the roof blew off or something, they were able to come up and...
We have had Johnson Roofing install several sections at both middle schools.
Okay.
Um, and like I said, WNC has done a section here at East Jancy.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Are, are these funds coming from the...
These funds are coming from the state Hailing, Hurricane Hailing funds that we received. Yes. So those funds would cover this.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to approve the roof estimate, the estimates that were seen with Kane River in East Jancy?
Are we awarding or approving?
I think we're awarding it to WNC Roofing.
I'll make a motion to approve and award the contract to WNC Roofing.
Can I ask another question before we continue on this? What's WNC Roofing's responsibility to have an issue? I know that Johnson has been, Johnny has fought on that. I don't know about WNC Roofing. Can somebody speak to that?
Steve, do you know, have we had to call them out for anything other than an estimate?
I haven't.
To my understanding, I believe that like a long number of one section here, there's changes on the sections like those. Like we've never had to provide, do any emergency work or any requirement?
I just know when we did have that roof blow off, they weren't, they were here that, that day. And I don't know what the response of WNC Roofing would be on it, on that is what I'm questioning.
Do you want to table this for the time being and come back to it? Or do you want to carry on?
They were very responsive about getting out and giving us an estimate. So, I mean, I feel like they, you know, we haven't had any issues, have to call them out. I think they offered to come and do some repair work, maybe.
They all, they all hired us. They honored that hire. It's just hired us. But it's not been an issue at all.
We hated to put more money in and then take it back off. Then we have to redo the whole, you know, we didn't really want to go out. They have been responsive in those things.
Mr. Robinson, do you have a recommendation either of the two?
I agree with you, Mr. Cox. I would also find the model close, very, very important. I think you can add a little more.
$10 is $10.
Oh, I'm just gonna make sure we're getting the service, you know? $10 means a lot to you to get the service.
Make sure they're responsible.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Get this motion carried.
I do want to let you know of an exciting event. Uh, we are getting closer with our additions at Burnsville Elementary. We see now that the walls are up, the roof is going on. And uh, so we're excited to think that the addition will be ready uh, in August. And that is hope and prayer. I join now and then. And at Blue Ridge, uh, we really didn't have an opportunity to do this at, at Parkville just because of the weather. Uh, but they have really been able to work on the building the last several weeks. And uh, the topping off party, this is where we're celebrating and placing the final steel beam on the addition, on the structure. That would be on Thursday afternoon at 4:00. Love for you to come out. We're excited about it. We invited the principals and leadership team, faculty and staff there at, um, at Blue Ridge. And anyone can join us. And so we thank Harper for this and our team at MPS. And uh, it should be a fun afternoon. And so we hope that you can come out. Uh, my understanding is that we get to sign the move and uh, that will be the next piece of steel beam that goes up, the last one. So it's exciting to think about. So I hope that you will join us. And again, it's a celebration of where we were just a couple of months ago in the mud and just surveying and now looking at steps in our process. So uh, excited about that. So I hope you'll join us on Thursday.
Well, we got two minutes. We can take a short recess or we can just begin. Let's just go ahead and start since we've been around and taking in our regular meeting. We want to thank you for coming out. It means a lot to us, people who've come out and participate in this process. Uh, it gives us feedback and gives us an opportunity to share with you what's going on, my students. Gives us an opportunity to help you be a part of our job, sometimes not well. But I'm gonna ask Mr. Robinson, he'll lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Very good. We do the white and we honor the states of America and to do a better way for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The silence.
So we've got some good news. We want to share that good news. I know we've got some visitors here tonight that we want to welcome and recognize. We asked the board members and Dr. Cox to come up front and get some good pictures. And uh, Ms. Allen, if you'll come and help me for this committee. So, thank you all. So, uh, I do want to recognize our Battle of the Books team that is here. Loved watching you compete the other day. Academic competitions are fantastic. Our coaches, we thank you for helping us to be here. Also, Ms. Allen, she, it's everything together, Ruckers helping. I just thought it was a great morning of celebration and showing how smart our kids are on books that they're reading. So I want to, thank you. So I just want to congratulate you all again. I think that you did an outstanding job. And uh, Ms. Allen's gonna be calling your names out. So if you'll come up, we're gonna shake some hands and uh, we're gonna get a good picture of you. And so again, we appreciate everything uh, that you have done in getting ready for Battle of the Books. Let's give them all a round of applause.
Luke Banks. Maxie Buchanan. Lightner Turk. Lucy Heel. Race Cune. Madison Laker. Lost at McEnroe. Jenna Mead Stroud. And Baby Whitaker. I would love to have the coaches to come down as well. Ms. Carla Keen and Ms. Lisa Burles. They did a fantastic job on their student this year. And their principal, Ms. Melanie Decker. I'll come on down. Make the big recognition for your hard work. Thank you.
Uh, the next group we'd like to recognize are our National War teachers. So the next group we'd like to recognize, if any of them are here tonight, our National War teachers, we want to congratulate them. Uh, it's an outstanding honor. And uh, we have Haley Daniels, Judy Davids, Casey Davis, or Amy Hall. Any of them here at the center? So we, uh, we just want to say thank you to them and recognition to them. And also to Western North Carolina Strong Youth Service Corps. Dr. Cox, anything you want to say to that group?
I'm getting information, you're not here, but I did want to share some information about them. So it is the Center for Environmental Farming Systems at North Carolina State University. And they've invited us to participate in their WNC Strong Youth Service Corps program. And this has been funded by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Uh, and they're going to recruit six of their high school students to participate in an opportunity to learn about their local food system. And these were only counties that were hit by the hurricane. And so this is a great opportunity. And thanks to generous contributions from the North Carolina Alliance for Health, those students will be paid for their work. So it'll be like a paid internship. Um, and they're also gonna take part in career readiness workshops and service days throughout the counties. Um, and additionally, they're in the process of hiring two high school teachers to work as mentors and to work as the point of contact for the district. So this is a great opportunity. We're very excited. Mr. Williams and myself met with the representatives from NC State. Wonderful people. Um, and they, um, they're just really excited and we're really excited for this opportunity for students. Mr. Williams, would you like to add anything?
I think that's it. I'm hoping to give one last teacher and a nice shout out for the people that are involved.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda is our consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Make a motion, Mr. Williams.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Superintendent Updates, the silence.
Alright, just wanted to give you a couple of updates if we can. We, I appreciate Carla and Andrea Heather. It's an opportunity for teachers to become, or TAs to become teachers. TAC teacher program, so we have signed an MOU agreement with UNC Charlotte. And we have some folks that are signed up with our classes, so we are excited about that for them. And uh, really appreciate our local colleges, everything that they do for our future teachers. Uh, we're doing work lessons with Mars Hill, Western, App State, Lee's McCray, and um, Malin Community College. So again, uh, thank you Carla for getting that MOU together. And I think this is gonna be a wonderful opportunity. So I guess right now with all the green, I'll say go Nodders. That's unusual, kind of a App State fan. But anyway, uh, so we, we appreciate that agreement. Also to let you know, Techno Bluesa is going on right now. And uh, Ms. Allen is working extremely hard with her partners there with STEM West. And so we appreciate everything that they do for us. And um, they are working at Burnsville Elementary the next couple of days. And not only with Legos, uh, but they have made tremendous amount of donations to our school district. And uh, so Andrea, you want to quickly just tell them the things that you saw today that they brought up and brought to us out of Hickory and States of Charlotte down that way?
I'm very excited to be with this. It was a cleanup of the past day with different educators that came in and they brought items for kindergarten, first grade. The show will be set tomorrow with Burnsville as a board of the state pullings up. They set a section with the gym and they're gonna be using total finishes for kindergarten and go to move. It's really exciting. Good chance to come by. Really appreciate you coming by. Great recording walk for our kids as they start thinking about their careers, what they're going to make in life. But they'll be working with finishes and a lot of the work from Legos and a lot of other steel activities that will be going on tomorrow, Friday, through about. And then on Wednesday, they're coming here to Jancy to work this day with finishes and a lot of activities. So we're very excited to have this opportunity to go out and work. And they brought books, they brought, um, digital tools, they have steel workhills, very, very nice steel workhills. Every third quarter, every fifth year, they will be there. And then I got some lots of resources, just teams. They brought a few challenges and they have a water bottle, they have cook floors, sun glasses, they just build the rest of the yard to support our students and activities. So if you get a chance to come back, I would love to be great.
And we appreciate everyone at STEM West and again, their partnership and helping us in all they do. The mental health support update, I want to let you know with principals tomorrow in our meeting, uh, we'll be sharing with them some opportunities that we have and partnering with some groups from across the state. And uh, one of them that will be presenting to us tomorrow is Brian. Brian Russell is out of Asheville and uh, he represents the NC Resiliency Coalition. And uh, so we appreciate him for coming and talking with us. In other words, two schools would have the opportunity to work with his group for two years and to have a coach assigned to each of those schools and to work with them. The other group, uh, we heard about the other day, that SRAV. And uh, counselors from across North Carolina have been trained to help with not only the resiliency piece, but the long-term recovery piece. And uh, so we'll talk with principals about which of these groups that they would like to help represent, to come, uh, support our faculty, our staff, our students, our families. And uh, we want to make sure that we're providing that wraparound support that may be needed at this time of the mental health. We know we have some students that have been anxious or depressed or worried since the hurricane. And so we want to again, continue to make sure that we're doing everything that we can, uh, not only to support them academically, but also socially, emotionally. And so, uh, we'll get more information about these groups tomorrow and I'll let you know what that looks like in April. But I do thank our principals for all the work that you're doing. And Ms. Allen, hopefully you can bring us a finch that we can take a look at in April at our next meeting. We also want to let you know quickly about the pre K kindergarten registration days. We do these every year. Um, we continue to have great students in our school system and also our ADM. ADMs to be very well in Jancy County schools. I think that's because we do a lot for our students and our teachers. And uh, so we want to make sure with our pre K's that we are getting that word out to register. We have 54 slots that are offered every year, um, with our partners in North Carolina. And so, uh, we want to make sure that all those slots are filled. Kindergarten and registration, I think they have to be five on or before August 31st. So we'll be sending home some flyers and phone calls and that kind of thing. If you know anyone that wants to, uh, join our school system, we'd love to have them. We'll be at the town center first, run some fun activities and some things with the sheriff's department and the bus and just lots of different fun things they always do. We'll start there. And then uh, the party will continue on to our elementary schools. And so they'll get to meet the teachers, uh, tour the school a little bit, and they'll be at the elementary schools in the afternoon. So we're excited about the registration day. Please help us to spread the word. Also Governor Stein's visit. We appreciate him coming to Jancy County to see what our needs are. We're really excited about that. And so he visited down at Michael Elementary, did an outstanding job talking with, um, Principal Bennett. And we appreciate her answering his questions. Did a great job from there. Uh, we went on up to South Oak Fire Department. And uh, so we appreciate again, his office, everything that they're doing to help us and listen to us as we continue to recover from the hurricane. Their funding, state funding is really important to us. So we appreciate everybody advocating and again, his, we're coming to visit with us. We will have some folks coming from his office, um, probably in a week, I believe it is. Next Monday, I'll let you know for sure. Uh, once all those timeframes are announced, some folks is hired in, uh, in education and section. And so we're excited again about them coming to visit. I'll give you more details later on.
Next on our agenda, we have the Board of Education Scholarship. We discussed earlier in the previous meeting, increasing that scholarship from about $500 to $2,000. And I believe a lot of the basis for that is invested in our local people. And uh, we need to take a vote on that now. Do we have a motion to approve the Board of Education Scholarship?
Make a motion, we do.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have a board resolution here to, uh, for the meeting dates and locations coming up. We issued a motion to approve that.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Next up, Mr. Stevens, aviation.
Good afternoon. Just wanted to give you a very brief update on aviation. I've talked with, uh, multiple school districts in the state who offer aviation programs. So we have a really good idea of the types of programs that are out there and what we would like to pursue and how we could incorporate different programs at the high school into this pathway. Um, so we'd like to pull in some drones, some auto mechanics for the engine servicing and then of course the aviation. But uh, our goal would be to start a program in the spring of 2026. So we'd have to get a teacher hired and the training that they would need. And uh, one of the programs, um, has a good curriculum that we've contracted with for training for the teacher and to help implement that, that curriculum. And they provide support for a year, you know, whenever the teacher needs what they just call them. So we had a really good start. Uh, I could, I know that most of the systems are doing. Any questions?
I got a couple of questions. Uh, I was in a meeting with some folks, uh, I guess that's been two weeks ago, just talking about summer plans for aviation and also like a camp or maybe an expo. Do you have any?
Well, we had a fantastic aviation summer camp last summer. It's kind of got to a fly school in, at the Asheville Airport. And they didn't know they were gonna be taking up a control tower that they were. So that never happens. So that was amazing. And um, they also got to visit, um, at the Sealy Museum of Aviation, but they got to do some really cool things around it. And then in the fall, right, it was right before Hurricane blink hit, we did have an aviation expo that they were showing in Florida from all seven graders and it was fantastic. So I would love to be able to continue that next fall. So to see them. So I would love to be able to continue that next fall, to see how everyone is proceeding through the recovery process, but I would love, the kids loved it and the pilots loved it, and all the organizations involved. Very busy. Any other questions?
Thank you. Next up, President of the County, Ms. Hannah Collins.
I'm the Minister of Port, Ms. I'm the Senator on the board. I'm coming back to you to share our 2025 test and accountability summer plan. This is on last month's agenda for review, and it's this month's agenda to take action on it. This is just a reminder, this is just for the second administration of our EOGs and AOCs. You'll know that science is not on here this year, science is in a standard setting here, it's in an assessment, so it's not an option for a second administration, but all the other options are except the Extend One. We don't do a second administration for Extend One testing. The last student date is May the 23rd, the last date for staff is June the 4th. And so our remediation would be May the 27th and May the 28th, two days, three hours each for a total of six hours remediation. And then the test dates would be May the 29th and May the 3rd, so we have two days' option. And that would also be if a student needed to take multiple tests, that could be done. Do you guys have any questions on that?
Do we have a motion to approve the testing and accountability 2025 summer program plan?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Mr. Derek Murphy, Transportation.
Member of the Board, Ms. I'm Dr. Cox. This month we did add the bus on, the yellow bus on the way to the rats with Dr. State. We did add the airfield road on this week. Have been talking to LT, we just let the contract out, 22 miles of road down that 10W, that's 18, 18 connecting sidewalks with that, and I think it's 13 bridges. But I said wrong miles, that's nine miles down that one. 22 miles up here to Chocola and the Philtrum and Little Bridge and all the bridges. So we are sort of getting back to a little bit of what is normal, what is normal right now, but then we would go right back into a lot of construction. And I don't have any good dates on when we can start that.
Thank you. Next up, our manager's department, the Board of Statistics.
Thank you, sir. Chairman of the Board, excited to speak. Your consideration, Blue Ridge Elementary School, Kim has been installed there, is operational now. For Burnsville Elementary School, we're researching 100 gallon, 199,000 BTU water heater for the kitchen. Scupped up the work, include installation, pipe and venting, new gas regulators, testing and permitting inspections. For South Oak Elementary School, we are looking at OCC motion sensors on the lights and hallways to be installed by Whitsun's Electric, do not have a start date at this time. For Kane River Middle School, estimates for the new dugout from Tricam Construction have been obtained. Next, Lee at Kane River, the field lighting pole that was leaning severely from the storm has been straightened and secured. Next, Ms. Fox has been working with representative from French Bar Electric to have new electric panels installed at the baseball field, and at present is the lights are operational. Scoreboard has been installed along the soccer field, and thanks to Harper for the use of the lift. And at the present, scoreboard is operational. For East Henson Middle School, met with Garrett Rogers from ECS Southeast, and he looked at the slide in the back, and we're waiting to hear from him on that project. For Kane River, East Henson, of course, roofs. Mountain Heritage, met also Garrett Rogers on the same date, ECS Southeast, and he looked at all three of the slides after school. On March the 12th, we received recommendation for the amphitheater area. Include regrading slope, placing and compacting soil. And we have talked with a construction company, a local construction company, and looking at the slides, and he is working up an estimate for that. The slide behind football fieldhouse, though, is going to be quite a bit more involved, and it's going to take some engineering and waiting for some details on that. On-demand water heaters are being installed in the lobby of Mountain Heritage. That work should begin this week. We requested an estimate from Whitsun's Electric to install some 240 outlets in the ore building for the running of Mr. Dot's shop equipment. And working with Ms. Deaton, CTE Director, and Ryan Aldrich from Aldrich Electric about providing some outdoor lighting down at the ore building. Meeting with Steve Parks, that we have to see engineering tomorrow at 1:00 approximately, and he is offering to go over some of the plans on the parking area so that he can submit them to DTI. And I mentioned Ryan Aldrich, at this time, we're using Ryan to catch, help us catch up on some firework. That's all.
I got one question, Steve. I know historically, the county always uses Kane River for their adult league softball. Do they help us maintain anything down there, or is that the school's responsibility to keep all that up?
They are actually helping quite a bit.
Okay.
Forgot his name.
I have county officials saying they use it. We use it, they always, they, and they, they help us with adding, installing, they do down there. But we have maintained it.
Okay, that's good. I didn't know how we were going to run that now, and I know there was talk at one point in time with the county that they were going to get, we were going to get new lights there. Have you heard anything else about that? That's been like a couple of years ago, we're talking about it, so I didn't know. I'll check.
They maintain that, just like Parks, and they take good care of everything there.
Okay.
Understood. Ms. I'm, correct?
No.
Ms. I'm, go to you.
I just want to share two more things with you. One, a big thank you to Sonny Weeds and Kim Bennett. They had also worked on a grant for the technology in hurricane relief, so thank you too. And we'll be able to replace much of our equipment that was lost during the storm or damaged during the storm, so that amount coming from the state was $270,000. So congratulations to all, that will be a big help in us getting back on track with our laptops and our medium boards and just various things, pieces of equipment that we need. So y'all did a really good job on that, so thank you. Also, we have with us Josh and Aubrey. They are here to talk about the CTE building expansion update, and so we appreciate you guys riding up the ball and weight of Burnsville today, Charlotte, Nashville, and so welcome, and let us know what it is that you've discovered so far.
First, good evening. Thank you. Good. And thank you for having us. So, Aubrey, you want to? Okay. Yeah. We met with some engineers and Kim and Donnie on February 21st, and to express our interest in continuing with the project to see it through. We have best of interest in working with the district, and despite the design bill contract being terminated, we still wanted to see the project through and participate in any way that we could. So what we talked about on the 21st was providing a proposal to the district to serve the capacity that we're essentially serving now, all the other active work as an agent of the school district as your architect. The plans, the plans were nearly, the plans were complete in terms of the design build project, but if the district is keen on putting it out as a, as a design bid build project, we have to make a couple of tweaks to the front end specifications. That's not going to take long. Our proposal is actually complete. We've been waiting for the last three weeks on a quote from the, a proposal from a civil engineer that was engaged separately from us. They had a separate contract with William McQueen and Branch Group. They were not under, under us like the structural engineer and the mechanical electrical plumbing engineer was. So, so we've been waiting on them. The civil engineer that had been working on that portion of the project fell ill, and I think Aubrey, if I've got this right, was out for a week in, in this duration of three weeks. So we're pressing, we're pressing the civil engineer as much as we can to get their, get their proposal in so that we can then submit our proposal to the, to the district. The idea being that if this all came forward now, and we're also engaging contractors that would be interested in bidding on the project, in addition to the pre-engineered mill building manufacturer that was already engaged through this process, their key interest in this would be to put the project out to bid with the goal of certain construction to be as early as the end of May. So.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Sure.
Had side events. We've been waiting two years on this.
We've talked about it.
Yes.
Just getting the proposal to us, making it available.
Sounds, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda is chairman updates. And everybody's out, we have talked about this for a long time, but if you've been around, then we, how much of all, you realize that there's a lot of hurdles to try to get your house, to get a project on the ground, to make things start happening. The ore building out here on the regular basis, the teachers at the high school, they want to know when it's going to start. I have one other debate, Kim, if you start the barn project before you do the ore building, I'm going to be mad. That's not a bad thing. Everybody's wanting things to happen, everybody's competing for the same fund. And our goal is to make certain that our students don't graduate without having every opportunity possible. We want to make those things happen swiftly as possible, but as correctly as we can at the same time. The barn is going to be huge. We watched our agriculture program just explode, we watched the kids come in for the animal scythe that have never been part of that program. Next you've got a rain that's going to be at the end. When you drive up 19 coming towards Mountain Heritage from the west, you're going to see an arena sitting there on the top of that hill right there. And what a scythe that will, they will change, that'll be, since that school was first constructed. We move on, Cynthia talks about the aviation program. Cynthia sales herself just a little bit short. We all the time push and prod at her, and she does a fantastic job. If you could adjust all the environment, when we went over to Tennessee and went to the airport there, or the facility where they pitched this class, I mean, you can eat off the table before we're just spoiled season. The opportunity that our kids are going to have to have a successful living wage job can still be most likely in this, in this area. It's phenomenal. It's just hard to comprehend a child that can take a one-year course at Mountain Heritage, go on and take another one-year course at this facility, and they're going to, they're going to have employment. Every student that's graduated from the program has been gainfully employed, and that's, that's more than we can say about most opportunities. Right above this, we have a section that says Grand Rider Report. I don't think we give them credit for our credit screen. Our grand riders have been our saving grace in this county and this system, and for that we want to thank you, whether you're, whether you're our normal Grand Rider in the board office, whether you're a principal in this school system, whether you're a teacher, whether you're administrator, wherever you fit in, we thank you for that. Our athletic fields, we'll run up the laps. Since the park has washed away up there, I can tell you, that was because of our seasons are abbreviated, we're having high-stakes games we normally have. We want to have, welcome to Lost Hager Fields. There's not a lot of options, just don't have them. But one option we do, we need to explore is lighting our middle school fields, where instead of playing one game, maybe two games in the afternoon, they can have a third game. They can play on Saturdays. Just given as many opportunities as we can, wherever a kid wants to participate, we'll be able to still stay in this area. Scoreboard, scoreboard here doesn't work at the moment, we're working towards getting that repaired, thankfully the one at Kane River now works, I understand, and the lights are working there. As a kid growing up here, this field had lights, it had four lights on. Now they played men's ice pitch softball, there's a lot of different environments we're looking at now. But there's a lot going in to make this happen for our young people in this county. Salary study. Everybody likes salary study, nothing. It reveals sometimes things that I wish it did. The truth of the matter is, we're doing our very best to put people in the positions that they can be successful, or they can have a good living wage, for their, their gainfully employed here, and glad to be employed in this county stuff. That's our fact, and we're working towards that. Property evaluations, the property on the other end of the county, we'll have those evaluations that are May meetings, correct, April meetings. April meeting, we'll have that, our plan should be completed, and we'll be able to move forward with that and share that with them. Everyone of us here has managed to bow, don't they? And they're ruined for different reasons. My mind's more now than it ever has of people excited about what's going on in Henson County. And you know what a lot of those people are excited about what's going on in Henson County? They live here. They live in Madison County, they live in Bonham County, they live in Mitchell County. Houses happening in Henson County, not happening in our country, like I tell you now, because of all the dedicated grand riders and people that get out there and do everything possible to make certain that our kids are successful. We've got administrators that work countless hours to ensure the success of our students, and for that work, we are appreciative of that. But at the same time, we're appreciative of Mr. Rode, I believe, maybe I might have hurt your name today, Mr. Rode being here to film this, to be able to put it out there where we can get more people involved. We can have more people reaching out to the legislators and elected officials throughout the state, throughout this nation, on behalf of Henson County schools. It means a lot to our students, our families. The last thing I'm going to mention is near and dear to my heart. I grew up, got here above the school. This school always had two edges on the line. It is a death trap to come across that hill during a bowl game. And I feel the sun going by South Oak Elementary, they made a second drive up there. That's something we discussed, we'd ask the children, pray about that, help us to work towards making that happen, to provide more safety for that community. Most of all, I want to thank you for being here. Some of our meetings are bigger than others, but we appreciate everyone that shows up, we appreciate your participation. We pick on Kim over there, maybe as much as Cynthia, I don't know. But we appreciate her keeping us on our toes as far as budget goes. We're thankful for that. But thank you for coming out, and thank you for, for being a part of the process. Our next informational items, on Thursday, April 3rd, 2025, we have a special meeting, budget and land update. We have a central office at 5:30 PM. Monday, April 14th, 2025, we'll be at Kane River Middle School. At 5:30 PM, we'll have a work session. 6:00 PM, we'll have a regular meeting. Pre-K kindergarten registration, Wednesday, April 16th, 2025. 12:33 at the Town Center, 3:30 to 6:00 PM at the elementary schools. High school students, Thursday, April 17th. Auction teaching work day, Friday, April 18th. And spring break, spring break, the schools will be closed April 21st and 25th. Senior signing day, Friday, May 2nd. And our spring board retreat will be Friday, May 2nd, 2025. Fundraising, 2025. Fundraising, 2024, 25. We need a motion to adjourn. So do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries, it's Nancy Jones, thank you.